The clock struggles, doesn't it? It's either behind or ahead. Yep, just turned to. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business would be the approval of two sets of minutes, one from a special meeting on January 13th. That was an appeal for the Fairfield trustee, and the other is our commissioners' meeting from January 17th.
I'll make a motion we approve both sets of minutes as submitted.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passes. Paula?
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the claims from January 18th, 2023, through February 6th, 2023 be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Mr. President, I would also like to recommend the payrolls dated January 20th, 23, and February 3rd, 2023 be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Stuart?
Are we starting with the opening of bids?
I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, that's right.
All right. First one we have is White Construction. With a total base bid of $9,655,000. And alternate one looks like for $56,975. Alternate, alternate two. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Alternate two, a addition of $840,800. With a total base bid of $9,273,679. Alternate one is $56,975. Alternate two is $1,492,420. And alternate three is $1,576,000. Third one is from Atlas, Atlas Excavating. With a total base bid of $9,931,444. Alternate one is $56,975. Alternate two is $1,418,850. And alternate three is $1,497,200.
Any questions? So we'll be taking those under advisement. Thank you to everyone who submitted bids. And next up, Stu.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion.
Make the motion that we take these bids under advisement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion passes.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is a letter to First Merchants Private Wealth Advisors. They're holding an ESCRO account of just over $5,000 for half-wit improvements on 500 East, which date back to when we owned 500 East and Journal and Courier was out there. Since then, the city has annexed. The federation that owns Journal, everything's changed. Nobody can be touched. So this letter just turns back to the bank our rights and claims on this amount. Doug?
Yeah, just, I mean, the issue is that the ESCRO agreement has contingencies that we can never satisfy because we don't own the land anymore. So we'd just be relinquishing our rights to the ESCRO.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this relinquish of interest ESCRO fund letter and as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, Stu.
Thank you.
Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. President, I move that we hear ordinance 2023-03-CM, Uso Amendment Number 109.
Second.
Thank you. The first item before you today is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance having to do with agricultural rental halls, more colloquially known as party barns. We found that as these have been approved, and in some cases not approved, over the years, they create disruption for neighbors. And so we've proposed to the, to the plan commission, and they approved unanimously a set of minimum requirements for agricultural rental halls. In, in short, they would be that there'd be a requirement for at least 1,000 feet of separation between the hall itself and the nearest existing dwelling, that there be no outdoor amplified music, with the exception of ceremonial or processional music, that there be limited hours of operation and limited number of guests, and then at the discretion of the administrating officer, perhaps the need for a buffer yard. That's it. Any questions?
No, sir.
Anything from the?
Going with a thousand-foot setback, all the current party barns would be in violation right now, then, basically?
I'm not sure. I think it would impact a number of them. I mean, they'd be legal nonconforming. They wouldn't, it wouldn't make them out of compliance with the ordinance. But if they wanted to expand in the future, in addition to whatever, they would need a new special exception and a variance from that, that minimum separation requirement.
So even if down the road they tried to sell it, then it could no longer be a so-called party barn unless it comes back to a special exception.
No, the special exception runs with the land. So it can transfer ownership, but if you want to expand it.
Okay.
If you want to make it bigger, you need to come back.
Okay.
To the BZA.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? Hearing and seeing none.
Fires?
Yes.
Marta?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion we hear ordinance 2023-04-CM.
This is a set of map, map amendments, zoning map amendments in the town of Stockton that follows on the heels of our approved Stockton Land Use Plan. And these are really a set of corrective rezonings that were supported by the town's folk and kind of fall in the category of being non-controversial. There's a set of properties in town that are zoned R3 for multifamily use. No one knows why they're zoned R3, but they should rightly be zoned R1. They're being used for single-family. R1 is a single-family district, so we'd be rezoning those. We would be rezoning the downtown area from NB to NBU. NB is more of a suburban district that would, that would create or allow for strip malls and commercial shopping centers, whereas NBU fits more within a small town with the smaller buildings built to the street, creating more of the Main Street setting. And then a couple other various and sundry rezonings. This does not include any rezonings around the perimeter of the town to allow for new suburban residential development. We thought that that should wait, and if it takes place in next year, five years down the road, or 10 years down the road, the developer should make their case at that time rather than sort of paving the way for them. And that's in accord with the town's wishes. They were very concerned and weary about suburban or residential growth around the fringe of the town. And so we're not, we're not going forward with the rezoning of those areas. They'll stay agricultural. So any questions?
And as I recall, David, there was a lot of input from the folks in Stockwell as this process moved forward.
Oh, no shortage at all. Plenty.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from the board? Would anybody in the public like to comment about this rezone? Seeing and hearing none.
Marta?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Fires?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-04-CM passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, we have the agreement with Financial Solutions Group, Inc.
Yes, this is in regards to the fairgrounds bonds that were issued and continuing disclosure requirements. Financial Solutions Group has completed these disclosure requirements for the past few years, and it's paid for out of Eat at Professional Services with a not-to-exceed amount. I see that we've paid less than $3,000 for the past three years, and I would ask for your approval to continue with that.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion we approve the 2023 continuing disclosure agreement as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Jason Huber. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Brady.
Good morning.
Before you, I'd like to request three positions. They are funded through our Department of Corrections grant. That took effect at the first of the year, the first being a work release assistant coordinator, the second being a case manager assistant coordinator, and the third being a corrections officer. The case manager and work release assistant coordinators are 100% funded through the Department of Corrections grant, and the corrections officer is 60% funded through that grant. 40% would be funded through our user fees. Asking for your approval, please.
Okay. So these are in the, the current year.
Correct.
It doesn't, I mean, in this, the DOC grant, because that's June 30th to?
They switched it to a calendar year now.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So it took effect the first of the year. And we would anticipate these being continued to be funded through the Department of Corrections in the years to come.
They would be?
I, I would anticipate that.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion we approve the case manager assistant coordinator position, the work release assistant coordinator position, and the corrections officer position.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy?
Good morning.
Cindy Shaki, Department of Information Technology.
This is just a contract to purchase two new copiers for the extension that was just added at Community Corrections. The maintenance that's going to be on there can be paid out of our funding, the monthly maintenance. I checked that, and we have, do it has funds to pay that through the end of the year. So we should be good on that. We just need permission to purchase and money.
Okay. So we have two contracts, one for the Sheriff's Department?
I understand Robert Goldsmith, the sheriff, has already agreed, signed and agreed to pay for his.
Okay.
So we just need funds for the Community Corrections, and then they will go on, excuse me, the ones from Community Corrections will go on our maintenance contract.
Okay.
And I believe they're on two separate contracts so that the maintenance at the Sheriff's Department can be paid separately. So.
So, but we have to approve both contracts?
Yes.
That'd be the better practice.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the Tepeneo County Community Corrections portion of this contract with Sharp in the amount of $15,150.35.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion we approve with Sharp Business Systems, the copier for the Tepeneo County Sheriff's Department, in the amount of $14,105.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion we approve with Sharp Business Systems, the copier for the Tepeneo County Sheriff's Department, in the amount of $14,105.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. Good morning, Sadie.
I have some cleanup, if you will, from the Highway Department in a added position. The Highway Department would like to eliminate district dragmen and only utilize the truck driver job description. There are currently four district dragmen. And then eliminate the sign and paint foreman. They're one of those positions, and only utilize the foreman position.
Mr. President, this went through the Personnel Committee, and we all agreed to it. So say that I move that we eliminate the titles of district dragmen. That'd be four positions, and have them, in exchange, create four more positions under the truck driver description. And then we also eliminate the sign and paint foreman title and add, that's just one, and then add one current just foreman description.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
The Highway Department would also like to create a new position, program engineer position classified. The classification was completed by WIS as an exec one, also passed by Personnel Committee.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we create the new position as program engineer.
And before I second that, the reason we really looked at this is that we think we can get a lot more in-house engineering work done and not have to pay less into vendors or things like that to do this work. So I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
The final item is the reclassification of community health case manager. This was a new position in April of last year. The reclassification comes from added certifications that we did not know that were needed for that position. So it goes from a karma three to a karma four.
Is this for Health Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this reclassification for the community health case manager as presented.
Is this something we have to do?
Because it's changing the job description. I mean, it's reclassification.
I don't know that we've ever done reclassifications before.
I don't know the answer to that. I'll trust your experience here.
Jennifer, do you? I don't think we've ever done a reclassification.
Have you not?
Uh-uh.
I guess it's the first time for everything.
We create and we eliminate.
Okay.
Well, but, I mean, I guess I'd say philosophically, if you have the power to create and eliminate, then it'd be up to you to change what it is, whatever it was that created. You wouldn't want somebody else entrusted with that authority, I wouldn't think.
Well, maybe to go back and do a lot more. All right, I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Pat.
Here before you for a position of application system support specialist. We've gone through the steps with the committee. As you are aware, we have 75-plus computer laptops within our office. We deal with 21-plus different software systems with various law enforcement agencies at the state, local level. We deal with the systems from the Supreme Court, the court systems, Odyssey Quest, Body Cam systems, of which there are multiple different vendors and softwares because most law enforcement agencies have either gone with different vendors or updated version of those vendors. So essentially, we, and we receive thousands of hours of video and other digital evidence on our cases. We need a person inside our office that can facilitate the inventory, the storing, the retrieval, the redacting, the training, the presentation. All the courts that you're aware, since you funded it, are now relying heavily on digital evidence and the ability to show them during the trial or the case. Currently, what we try to do is we try to train every deputy prosecutor, every staff member on 25 or 28 different software systems and how to fix them. And that's just not a appropriate use of resources. It's counterproductive and it's highly inefficient. So we're asking for this position to be able to basically have someone at the tip that will know exactly what all the systems do and how to fix them, especially the software. We experience glitches or issues daily on all these different platforms. Truly, it is a, we are being overwhelmed with all these different software systems. It's in a, in a perfect world, all these law enforcement agencies, which is just one, but as you are aware, they don't. And those agencies are, you know, not, just include sheriff's departments, the jail, Lafayette Police, West Lafayette, Purdue, State Police, DOC, DNR, Community Corrections, Supreme Court, our court systems, evidence.com, Avail, Acam, BodyWorn, and multiple other systems, just to name a few. Questions?
Makes perfectly good sense, and I understand that you worked with our IT folks to kind of, kind of bring this to where we are today.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the positions in the 23 budget?
It was supposed to be. I haven't gone back and listened to the budget hearings, but I believe it was, and we basically deferred it to this year to start and get it formally approved.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this new position for prosecutor as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I'm here to ask for you to sign the 4E contract. It's with the Public Defender Commission and us. And to have it reimbursed, we've received reimbursement based on the number of chins and TPR cases we have. Last year, we received about, for two quarters, we received $13,600. The only real requirement that we have as a county is for us to keep track of how we spend that money, which we haven't spent any of it. It's in a separate account that we would have to come back and have it line itemed for us. So that's what we're asking. It's just for that agreement to be signed. And then I would need a copy to send back to the commission if you sign it.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we approve the funding reimbursement agreement for the cost recovery program as outlined.
Second. You have a motion and a second to approve the cost recovery outline as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And a motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Good morning.
Morning.
About the flock cameras, just here for you to sign the agreement. We got them approved. A few of the cameras, cameras approved for this budget. This is just the agreement so we can get started on the project. It'd actually be, it's for the sheriff's signature. I just asked him to bring it through here. So I like having a record of the contracts, the commissioner meetings.
So, so we were not actually signing it, so we?
Yeah, I mean, a motion, I mean, it'd be a motion to approve the contract for the sheriff's signature.
Okay. So I'll make the motion that we approve that contract with the sheriff's signature for flock safety.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I move that we hear ordinance 2023-02-CM, amending the Tepeneo County Stormwater Management Ordinance for second and final reading.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here before you for the second reading of the Stormwater Management Ordinance for Tepeneo County. I will mention and refresh everyone's memory, this has been before the Durange Board in January, and it was also at the commissioner's last meeting for the first reading. So I'll spare everyone a regurgitation of those talking points, but I, obviously, I will go over anything if, if someone wants me to, and I'm happy to answer any questions pertaining to the documents, so.
Did you hear any feedback since the last meeting?
No, I did not.
We did not receive any feedback.
There was no public comment. Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask that. No, I did not in my office, and obviously, it sounds like you guys didn't either, so.
Any, any additional questions for Zach on the second reading? Anyone from the public like to comment on this ordinance? Seeing and hearing none?
Marta?
Yes.
Fires?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-02-CM passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Next up, we'll be awarding bids for the Tepeneo Villa Project.
Mr. President, these are the contracts that submitted from Big Ben and Brand Electric. We accepted their bids a while back, and they actually are working on a project right now. We just didn't have their official contracts. So the project is moving along very well. The new nurse station is just about finished, and they're starting to work in the kitchen area today. So by saying that, I will make a motion that we approve the contract between Big Ben Builder, Inc., and Brand Electric, Inc., working out the villa project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Next up, interlocal agreement for spay and neuter services.
All right. So this is an agreement with Four Precious Paws Low Cost Spay and Neuter Clinic.
It's actually, your end of it's the interlocal with the two cities. The city of Lafayette's the lead agency and has entered into a contract with Four Precious Paws.
So the three entities have agreed to help So the three entities have agreed to help with their rental cost in the amount of $48,000 the first year, amount not to exceed $36,000 the second year, and amount not to exceed $24,000 in year three. And of that amount, 50% of that is paid by Lafayette, 10% by West Lafayette, and 40% by the county itself. So with that, I'll make a motion. We approve the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Next up, the opioid settlement agreement.
This is a participation agreement that's been recommended to us by the National Opioid Council on the class actions. This one has to do with the litigation against Meyer. Tepiqanoo County share is a gross of $750,000. There's an attorney's fee to the opioid council of $131,250, and $56,750 is held back for a common benefit fund, and so the net to Tepiqanoo County would be $562,500.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the settlement participation agreement as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Good morning, Maeve Lee.
Good morning. Maeve Lee Daslapin with Greeley and Hanson. I'm here just to give us a quick summary of the climate action plan that we developed in Greater Lafayette and hope to pass an ordinance, a resolution, just a motion to approve the plan as presented. So, you know, as most of you know, this has been two years in the making. We started January of 2021. In June of 2021, Commissioner Dave Byers and our other two mayors signed a proclamation committing to the development of this climate action plan, a very community-driven plan. We've had stakeholders, Purdue students, leaders in local government, all three jurisdictions of Lafayette, West Lafayette, and the county, help us develop this plan. We've had business leaders be involved in this plan throughout the process, as well as industry members that were able to provide input. So the start of the plan, you know, as any climate action plan, was baseline studies. We were able to do technical studies with groups such as the Environmental Resilience Institute, through the IU cohort, and also ICLI, which is a nonprofit that helps governments with sustainability initiatives. Some of our technical studies included a greenhouse gas inventory, equity, and vulnerability studies to really understand what are some populations that will be most affected by this. As we know, not all populations will be affected equally by climate change, and so we were able to understand some of those issues as pertaining to our community. In particular, the Hoosier Resilience Index assessment, which really helped us understand how best are we prepared for items such as extreme heat days, extreme wet weather, precipitation days, and also flood plain management. And finally, a tree canopy assessment that was conducted for the community to help us understand what are some priority areas that we need to be planting trees at to really mitigate those effects of climate change that we're starting to see in the community. So all of that information helped us develop our four focus areas within the plan. The first focus area being our largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. It's no surprise that energy takes up most of that sliver of our greenhouse gas pie. So energy use in the built environment, which is really our commercial buildings, residential buildings, and our industrial buildings. So energy use in the built environment, focus area one. Focus area two was transportation. Again, biggest goal here is to mitigate or reduce the vehicle miles traveled, but also look at some innovation and innovative technologies such as EV and hybrid vehicles to really lower that emission profile. Third, we looked at agriculture and forestry. This is actually a sector where we're in the green in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, so we already have a lot of good programs in the community, trees that are absorbing that carbon dioxide and all of those emissions. So really, our main goal in the ag and forestry department is to continue to enhance that and continue to enhance our natural resources. And lastly, focus area four was water, wastewater, and solid waste. Again, a lot of good things that are happening in the community. Both our wastewater treatment plants are doing really good work to make sure that greenhouse gas profile remains low, so really, just to enhance that document again. Some of the biggest concerns I want to share with you, again, I said this was a community-focused plan. We did a number of surveys, a number of focus meetings, both in-person and virtual, to really get the community's input and what some of their biggest concerns were about climate change. And the four top concerns were increase in wet weather events, so increased precipitation, not being able to handle some of our higher storms that we see with the infrastructure that we have available currently, air quality impacts, I think especially after the COVID pandemic, that's a concern for the community. Third was the availability of clean drinking water. And lastly, risk to vulnerable populations. So again, keeping in mind equity, vulnerability, and making sure that we're catering to all populations equally. So that's the summary of the plan. As a last parting thought, I just want to leave you with something we discovered a few weeks ago. At the end of 2022, Google came out with a end-of-year summary report, and climate change was a term that was most Googled in Greater Lafayette than any other region in the country. So obviously, a very important issue for residents here, and I hope we can have conversations with our joint leadership committee, Michael Thompson's here from the APC, and others in local government, both Lafayette and West Lafayette, to kind of move this initiative forward. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments?
Well, thank you for your work on this, and thank you to the team from within all units of government, West Lafayette, Lafayette, and our Bayonne County employees were really involved and dug into this, so we appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
So I would guess just a motion to accept the findings?
I don't.
Don't need to do anything? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We have been notified that two members of our Board of Health have recently submitted their resignation, Dr. Thomas Paget and Tamitra Foster, who were both longtime members of the board. They were recognized at the Board of Health meeting last week, and with those two openings now, we have two individuals whose names have surfaced to serve in capacity as board members from now until 12/31/2026. And those individuals are Dr. Natalia Rodriguez from Purdue University. She's a professor of public health or doctor of public health, and Monica Keys, who is a local nurse practitioner. So with that, submit that to the board.
Just a question, but they would be staggered in terms, right? Because Dr. Paget's term expired at 12/31 of last year.
So that would be four years.
And then, but I'm not sure when.
Dr. Loomis and staff, do you know when Tamitra's? Okay.
So, okay. So which position is taking that one? Yeah, because that one would have just a one-year term.
Good morning. So I guess the question is, how long will each one of them serve? And I agree with Commissioner Murtaugh that Dr. Paget's term would be a four-year position, so we would put Dr. Natalia Rodriguez in the four-year position, and then Tamitra's position would be, she would have had one year left, so I guess we would put Monica Keys in a three-year spot.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we replace Dr. Paget with Dr. Natalia Rodriguez.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion passes.
And I'll make a motion that we replace the board seat previously held by Tamitra Foster with Monica Keys.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. No, no, no.
Go ahead.
Good morning. We have two grants to ask permission to accept. The Parks Department was awarded $15,000 from the Department of Interior Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program to restore the habitats and benefit the improvements and projects to control non-native invasive brush at the Ross Camp.
Mr. President, I move that we grant permission to accept for the Parks Department as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
And I'd like to ask permission from the sheriff's office to receive the $124,800 to assist with the purchase of the new body cameras for the deputies in 2023. The match for this award will be covered by the additional storage and necessary licensing, as well as the additional equipment that they use with their body camera.
Mr. President, I move that we grant permission to accept for the sheriff's department as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. We have reports on file from Central Mail, accounts payable, I'm sorry, duplicating clerk's office, the building commission, those will all be available immediately following the meeting. Do we have any unfinished or new business to be brought before the board?
I have none.
Public comment?
Move adjourned.
We're adjourned.